Good evening. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for February 12th, 2024. If you would please stand as you are able and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and ever since its creation.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Jenny Sunell.
Present.
Dan Larson.
Present.
Amanda Weaver.
Will be joining us later.
Yeah, she'll be a few minutes late.
Janice Hoppe.
Present.
Cory Snipes.
Present.
Scott Owen.
Here.
Rachel Holtine.
Present.
I understood also that Councilmember Dozeman will be joining us virtually. I do not see her signed in yet. When she does, I'll admit her immediately. Do we have a quorum, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much. Counselors, in your agenda packet, we have city council meeting minutes of January 22, 2024, and city council special study session notes of January 22nd, 2024. Are there any corrections or changes to be noted to these documents? Seeing none, we will let those stand as presented by with our thanks to the clerk. Are there any changes to be noted in the agenda? Seeing none, we will proceed with the agenda as noted. We have one ceremony that we want to celebrate tonight, and I'm going to go to our clerk, Mr. Kirkpatrick, to help us celebrate that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and good morning, Mr. Council. A municipal clerkship is a profession. What do I mean by that? Profession has been defined by someone wiser than I am as a community of practitioners who apply a unique body of skill and knowledge for the benefit of the general public based on evidence-based research and a code of ethics, all of which that community passes on, teaches to, the next generation of those professionals. Lawyers do it, doctors do it, architects do it. They all do it. Four years ago, I did not know municipal clerkship from how to repair a transmission, which I couldn't do then and still can't do now. However, our deputy city clerk, Robin Eaton, has now been recognized twice by the organization that certifies municipal clerks, the International Institute for Municipal Clerks. It is a global organization that applies the same standards across countries and certainly across the country. Their first designation is something called a certified municipal clerk. People who earn that distinction have spent hundreds of hours doing various kinds of education and training, as well as a number of years of experience working in government. A very, very few of the people who achieve a certified municipal clerk designation also achieve what we call a master municipal clerk. These are folks who have proven their leadership, their teaching ability, to people who are trying to come up in the profession, passing on that skill and knowledge to the next generation. It is my distinct pleasure to announce tonight that Robin Eaton has just recently been given the designation of master municipal clerk by the IIMC, and I wanted to congratulate him in front of the mayor and council in public. Mr. Eaton?
Thank you, Steve. I appreciate the words. It took a long time to come here to get to this point, and, you know, you need to take the next step, too.
Yes.
Because your city clerk is so close to getting his municipal clerk's designation that, you know, every day is just another day waiting. So we've got to get him into the group, too, then. We'll have two masters and one certified clerk in the city of Wheat Ridge. It'll be a thing of rarity, and I want to appreciate the city of Wheat Ridge for giving me a chance to obtain both of my designations from the IIMC. We're still doing ongoing training, PDOs. We've got one up in Frisco coming up. And like I say, it's a long time coming here because, you know, in the old days, in the 70s, we and my friends used to fight against Wheat Ridge High School. We fought with Wheat Ridge High School. In the 80s, kind of changed. A buddy of mine on our shovel crew, we raked rolls and compacted 72 tons of snow, 72 tons of hot asphalt in a snowstorm, 29 feet in the 90s. In the 90s, we helped build the Highway 58 flyover off I-70. So it's a progressive thing. You want to see things built and for them to stick around. And with this training, I'm hoping that we can do that for a long time in the city of Wheat Ridge. Thank you, sir.
On a personal note, I cannot tell you how many times the deputy city clerk has pulled my bacon out of the fire, or more importantly, kept me from spilling it into the fire in the first place, because when I got elected, I could spill municipal clerk, but that's about it. And Robin was a godsend to help me figure out, what do we do now? So I would like to thank him for the many years of hard work he has done for the people. Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Eaton.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Clerk Kirkpatrick. We are now at our public's right to speak. Public may come and speak to the members of the council for any item not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes at this time. And when I call your name, we have one speaker here in the council and another one joining us online. If you'd please come to the podium and introduce yourself, and then the clerk will start the counter. And I've got, first off, Mr. Jeremy Laufer up to speak, so.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Jeremy Laufer, L-A-U-F-E-R. As a community member of Wheat Ridge, I serve on the Wheat Ridge Community Foundation Board, Community Outreach Chair for the Wheat Ridge Business Association, and currently President of the Board for Local Works. Today, I am representing Local Works. Local Works released our annual report late last month. We summarized our 2023 accomplishments, presented our strategic plan for the next three years as well. Local Works' mission is to make Wheat Ridge a more vibrant place to live, work, and play. Our programs facilitate art, culture, economic development, and neighborhood revitalization in Wheat Ridge. Community, business, and beyond represents Local Works' pillar for our future. Over the next three years, Local Works will increase Local Works' financial stability, provide more micro grant opportunities for Wheat Ridge businesses, provide more micro funding opportunities for Wheat Ridge businesses, open the Clear Creek Maker Space in 2024, develop, grow, manage, and advocate on behalf of all business corridors in Wheat Ridge, improve and increase neighborhood revitalization events, and increase and advance civic engagement opportunities. Local Works is here to support, develop, and be the organization Wheat Ridge's businesses and residents can rely on to address our community's changing needs. You can read more about our accomplishments and initiatives online in our 2023 annual report at wearelocalworks.org. We look forward to seeing you in the community in 2024. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one speaker joining us on our Zoom format, Kelly Blynn. If you would please unmute and introduce yourself, and you'll have three minutes to address the council.
Great. Thank you so much. Hopefully you can hear me.
Yes, ma'am.
Great. So thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name's Kelly Blynn, and I know I usually come and blab about bikes and sustainability here, but I wanted to say a couple of words on another topic. I just learned last week, I'm a little late to the game, about the town hall held in Wheat Ridge on the migrant crisis, I think last month, and was just really upset to hear about some of the fear-based rhetoric being used at that town hall and the one in Lakewood. And so I just wanted to show up as one more Wheat Ridge resident, say I support the city doing what it can to help out with this crisis, and I know I'm far from the only one. I don't really know what's within reach and what is most needed at this time, but I think even demonstrating our values to be welcoming to our new neighbors is meaningful in a time of such fear and division, and I hope we will do what is within our capacities, knowing how much our neighbors in Denver have stepped up. The city has done such great work with its Equity Task Force, and this just seems like a really important opportunity for us to show leadership and be the kind of welcoming and inclusive community I believe we are. So I just wanted to say a few words. I know you've heard from others in the community, but I just wanted to make sure you were knowing that that sentiment is out there. If I have a few more seconds to actually wear my AT-AT hat and talk about pedestrian safety for a minute, I just wanted to say I really appreciate council taking up the issue in study session recently on snow removal on sidewalks. This is a real issue for people who rely on walking and biking to get around, and the AT-ATs have been documenting snow removal just over the last week and this week. And I have to say, it was pretty tricky to get to my bus stop this morning, and I did get some feedback from code enforcement just pointing out that there is an exception in our code that when plows push snow onto the sidewalk, that's not actually the property owner's responsibility, which just kind of begs the question to us, whose is it then? And so for our major corridors, this really probably speaks to the city playing a role. Other while, we'll continue to end up in a place where only parts of our corridors get cleared, and then the whole thing becomes unusable until the ice melts. So we've just seen people forced to end up navigating the streets and mobility devices when the sidewalk becomes impassable, and we really don't want to see anybody get hurt. So we appreciate you guys giving a lot of attention to this issue, and we're happy to help in any way that we can. Thanks for the time.
Thank you very much for your comments. Okay, we will, that's all of our public comment tonight, so we will go to agenda item number one.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, we have one more speaker online who registered earlier, Laura Drabison, and I apologize.
Oh, she is speaking on agenda item number two.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
That's okay. We have one more speaker, if it pleased the council. Please come to the podium and give us your name and whether you live in Wheat Ridge. Good.
I live in Wheat Ridge. I'm a Wheat Ridge resident. I've been here all my life. I'm 31. My name is Dominic Rico. I have a few things. I know three minutes, that's not that long. I was expecting 10, but I appreciate the three. First off, I wanted to say thank you all, thank all of you guys for just paying attention to the community. Habitat for Humanity, love that, you know, just the, I noticed when the riots were going on about, what is it, racism in the police force, you guys stepped up and you showed the police vid, you know, like, what do you call it? I know it's not real racism. It's like prejudice, you know, forget about it, you know. I'm just glad you guys, and first off, I like, I saw a couple city council meetings ago where a bunch of phone callers were on like some stuff about antisemitism and stuff, and I just want to say, none of those people were actual citizens. I know who did that. I was not part of it, by the way. That was from a website called 4chan, and a lot of people get together and like to do pranks and ridiculousness on innocent council members in innocent cities, and I think it's terrible that they do it, but it was all online, and none of those guys are actually real citizens. You know, I just heard someone talking about division. We don't want any more division. We don't want that. And also, okay, so I sent the mayor a couple things that I feel it is, you know, it should be on the agenda in the future, and now, there is technology coming out that has surveillance capability and also neurological capability, and I feel that should be on high alert right now, because there has been just loads and loads of evidence coming out about this kind of thing. I don't know if you've heard about it, like, in the early stages of the pandemic, it was more of a conspiracy, and the stuff's getting more and more real. I don't know if it's actually happening right now, but I feel like we should be in connection with the higher forms of government also, you know, just like all around, you know, like, what's Polis doing? What's Congress doing? What's Senate doing? What are the federals' governments doing, you know, in garbs to the locality and situation? Also, I wanted to make last comment, quick comment about, like, I know this is usually the start for a lot of people going up in higher forms of government, and I just want to say, within history, you know, if you look at, what is it, the Roman Empire, the Ottoman Empire, stuff like that, the Byzantines, you're going to notice like a lot of rise and fall type deals, and the ideology of a man, which I'm very glad, there was a gentleman who was speaking about, you know, the principalities of civics and, you know, one nation under God. I'm all for that, and I believe that if any of you go into the higher forms of government, please, you know, keep an eye out. If people are playing dangerous games, then tell someone, like, you know, with overseas or like, you know, funding like that, or, you know, things that are not in congruency with the community.
Thank you, Mr. Rico. Your time has expired. If you could close your comments.
Okay. Well, I appreciate, I wish, I really wish I had more time. This is why I write letters. I'll just write you a letter next time, but hey, peace out.
Thank you very much.
Have a good one.
Okay. We will now go to our consent agenda. Item number one, Counselor Hoppe, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I start, I'd like to just make note for our record that Councilwoman Weaver joined us at 6:32, and Councilwoman Dozeman joined us approximately 6:32 also. So we are all here. Consent agenda item number one A, motion to approve the purchase of salt materials for snow and ice control on city streets from independent salt company in a total amount not to exceed $140,200. Item one B, motion encumbering funds in the amount of $136,500 for bulk fuel purchase and delivery from Synergy Petroleum in 2024. Item one C, motion encumbering funds in the amount of $180,000 for utilization of the WEX fuel card system in 2024. Item one D, motion to award a custodial services contract and approve subsequent payments in an amount not to exceed $419,350 to SMB Confluence doing business as Janney King of Colorado, and approve a contingency in the amount of $10,000 for unforeseen custodial expenses. Thank you, Mayor. Item one E, motion to approve the purchase and payment of two Ford Expedition SSV police patrol vehicles in a total not to exceed $113,140. And one F, motion to cancel the March 11th, 2024 city council meeting. At issue, the city council meeting of March 11th, 2024 currently does not have any scheduled agenda items due to three members of city council as well as the city manager attending the NLC conference and one additional council member absent that evening, and seeing that there are no items currently scheduled for the state, it is recommended that city council cancel this meeting.
Thank you very much. This is our consent agenda. May I have a motion on consent agenda item number one A through one F?
I move to approve consent agenda items one A through one F.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Mayor Protem Stites. Would the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously, including an "I" vote from Councilmember Dozeman.
Thank you. We will now go to agenda item number two. Counselor Weaver, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I will. This is Council Bill number one dash 2024, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 10390 West 38th Avenue from Commercial 1C1 or C1 to Mixed Use Neighborhood or MUN. This is case number WZ-23-10. At issue, the owner of the property at 10390 West 38th Avenue is requesting the approval of a zone change from Commercial 1 to Mixed Use Neighborhood. The zone change will result in a zoning designation that would allow for the redevelopment and revitalization of the property.
Thank you very much. This is an ordinance on second reading. This is a public hearing. It is quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing, and Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. Elena Olivia Slouera is here this evening, planner two. Thank you.
Ms. Olivera.
Good evening. Is that on? Okay. Hello. My name is Elena Olivia Slouera, and I'm a planner with the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. I'm presenting case number WZ-2310, which is a request for approval of a zone change from Commercial 1 to Mixed Use Neighborhood at 10390 West 38th Avenue. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. The property is within the city of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and therefore, city council has jurisdiction to hear this case. The subject property is outlined in red. The property is located on the south side of West 38th Avenue between Miller Street and Lee Street, west of Kipling Street. The property measures a little over half an acre in size and contains a commercial building built in 1960. The property has existed in its current configuration for a number of years with a series of unsuccessful commercial ideas that did not come to fruition. All previous proposals would not have been supported by the comprehensive plan or by the goals envisioned for the corridor, being too intense for the context of the neighborhood. This is a zoning map of the area. The subject property is currently zoned C1 and is outlined in red. Nearby uses in the area include a mix of commercial and low-density residential. The site is surrounded by a mix of zoning, including C1 to the east and west, R2 to the south, and a planned residential development to the north. This is a view of the subject property looking south from West 38th Avenue. This is a view of the subject property looking east from Miller Street, and this is a view of one of the established neighborhoods from the subject property across West 38th Avenue looking north. The current C1 zoning allows for a variety of commercial uses, including retail and office. By contrast, MUN zoning allows residential uses, commercial uses, or a mix of the two, and the permitted retail uses are greater in number. The property is currently being used commercially by a local business, which provides laser engraving services. Should the zone change be approved, this use would still be permitted under the new MUN zoning, along with a variety of other uses. The applicant intends to rezone the property to redevelop it for townhome units. Residential uses are not permitted in the current C1 zoning, but are permitted in MUN zoning. The MUN designation would provide more flexibility for revitalization of the property and will provide standards for any future redevelopment, either commercial or residential. The MUN Zone District is appropriate for this segment, and particularly on this property, given its size and its location and the end goal for the site. MUN would enable the applicant to revitalize the site and bring additional housing options to the community, focusing on thoughtful and high-quality design. This table summarizes the current and proposed zoning's development standards. Most of the proposed zoning development standards would apply to the redevelopment of the property. Most notable differences between the two zone districts include setback requirements and build-to requirements. The design standards in MUN are strict and include architectural standards, open space requirements, setbacks, and parking requirements. As a requirement of the zone change process, a neighborhood meeting was held on August 30th, 2023 in a virtual Zoom meeting setting. Excuse me, 11 members of the public attended the meeting. Because Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city, we sent the application on referral to outside agencies, including fire, water, and sanitation, as well as completed an internal review. We did not receive concerns or objections from outside agencies. Before the hearing, the property was posted for 15 days, and letters were sent to property owners and occupants within a 600-foot radius. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the request on December 7th, 2023. Staff received three comments from members of the public on Wheat Ridge Speaks prior to this hearing. We use several criteria to evaluate zone change requests, which includes consistency with the comprehensive plan. Staff believes that the proposed MUN zoning is consistent with the policies and goals in the city's comp plan. West 38th Avenue is a primary east-west thoroughfare in the city, is classified as a principal arterial, and transitions to residential character to the north, south, and west of the site. In vision Wheat Ridge, the city's 2009 comp plan identifies this area as neighborhoods. This designation identifies areas where residents of all ages can live safely and comfortably. Defining characteristics of an established neighborhood in the comprehensive plan are consistent character, mature landscaping, high rates of reinvestment and dwelling ownership, consistent maintenance, and high desirability. A stated goal in the comprehensive plan is to promote reinvestment in underutilized properties and to promote a mix of neighborhood-supporting uses, including residential use and office use. This zone change request supports the comprehensive plan by enabling reinvestment in the property, by expanding the permitted uses, and by aligning the zoning with the city's goals to improve the appearance, mix of uses, property values, and overall vitality of the area. Ultimately, staff is recommending approval of the request for the following reasons. Based on the character and land use patterns of the area, the MUN Zone District is more appropriate than C1 in terms of allowed uses for the property. For that reason, the zone change should not have an adverse effect on the surrounding area. Staff finds a zone change to MUN is supported by the city's comprehensive plan, specifically the vision for the conversion of underutilized properties to serve as a mix of residential and small-scale commercial developments. This zone change request supports the comprehensive plan by enabling investment in the property and by allowing for more housing options in the area, maintaining the character of the existing neighborhoods. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I go to questions from council, I would like to invite the public to speak on this. I've had one person that signed up to speak, joining us online, Ms. Laura Drabison. If you would please unmute yourself, and you'll have an opportunity to address the council.
Hi. I will actually have Patrick Barron, who I believe is present in there, speak on this, if that's okay?
Okay, I had, and now, can you say that again, because I didn't hear the first half of your comment?
We have Patrick. We have Patrick Barron in our office, who is present in the meeting, and it might be more effective for him to present in person.
Okay, if you have an alternate here in the hall that would like to speak on this, please come to the podium. And if you please give us your name.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Barron, B E R R E N D. I'm an architect with Summit Design and Engineering. And Ms. Olivera has given a great presentation. We are available for any questions you might have this evening. Thank you.
So you are with the applicant, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right, I don't have anyone else sign up to speak, so we'll go to questions of council. I'm sorry, sir, if you'd like to come to the podium, I will listen to your question.
Hi there, I'm Tom Bricki. I live at four Range View Drive in Wheat Ridge, not far from the subject property. Sorry, I walked in a little late, I wasn't able to sign up on the paper. But I...
Okay, normally, we're getting, we're kind of, we've had some trouble with people bombing our meetings, and so we've really gotten, we've gotten to a sign-in, sign-in-only...
Okay, I was only a minute or so late.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and allow you to speak this time.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for your indulgence. I would say, as a community member, I disagree. I think this is a poor choice for the neighborhood. It is a, you know, I understand if we wish to rezone from a commercial to a residential property, but why not make it a single-family designation? That is the neighborhood on all sides, frankly. I foresee, you know, many problems, and I take exception respectfully with the staff contention that there will be no adverse effect. I, you know, I believe this is going to be zoned for a number of townhomes. Parking is certain to be a problem. I think the parking, you know, the visitors, et cetera, will spill out into the streets and nearby homes. I guess, I don't know if this has been disclosed or stated formally, but I'd read that there was an interest in exceeding the height limit in the city. If that is so, that's, there's no compelling interest to do that. You know, I think further, I would have some interest in further disclosure of the project, and for instance, you know, this is certainly not affordable housing, it's market rate, but I'd be very interested in what the price of these townhomes are going to sell for. I think you might be surprised at how much. I don't think that's going to suit many people who would, you know, we would expect to help. So I would like further information about the project. Again, I don't think it's right for the area, that's what I have to say.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, we will close our public's right to speak on this item and go to questions from council. Questions on council before, okay, Mayor Protim Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, and I know it's kind of in here, but I just want to get it out a little bit, because there's a number of questions about parking. What are the requirements for parking as far as townhomes and...
Yeah, the mixed-use code requires one parking space per unit.
Okay. And is there any other parking on property required?
No, not by the code. We always encourage it. We definitely encourage lots of onsite parking, but it's not required by the code.
Okay, and how many units would be allowed here?
With current land area, it would be about a maximum of twelve, but that doesn't account for right-of-way dedication, so realistically, it'd probably be ten or eleven units.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any further questions from council? Counselor Weaver?
Thank you, and thank you for your presentation. My question is, just to clarify, what we're doing here tonight, we're not actually talking about what is going to be built, but changing the zoning to what could be built, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So, so there's really, so what is the height requirement or restriction for M U N?
If it's residential uses, then it would be limited to thirty-five feet, and for all other uses, it would be, it could be up to fifty feet. But anything containing residential would be limited to thirty-five.
Okay, so mixed use then could be, if it had any residential units in it at all, it would be limited to thirty-five, even if there were a coffee shop or a business in the bottom?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you. And that adheres to the M U N zoning? So there hasn't been any discussion about an actual project or changing of height?
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counselor Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just wanted to also clarify that our bulk plane does apply to the mixed-use neighborhood?
Yes.
Thank you.
Before I close the public hearing, let's see, Counselor Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is probably more directed just in regards to staff. If you could give a little bit more history on this property and just some of the challenges and turnover and the commercial uses, I think that would be, give a good idea as to, as to why we may be considering rezoning.
I'm happy to field that one, and I might not get it exactly right in terms of timeline, but generally, over the last decade, there have been a lot of attempts at change of use. So many people remember that historically, this was a gas station property, and then about a decade ago, when we first allowed marijuana in the city, we did not have a cap on the number of dispensaries that were allowed, so the property owner was pursuing redevelopment or reuse of the site for marijuana dispensary. We created a moratorium, and they had already removed their fuel tanks, as I recall, and then it's gone through sort of a cycle of a few different proposals. There was a neighborhood meeting maybe six years ago for a used car sales lot. There was a neighborhood meeting for a zone change, the same zoning request that just didn't proceed at the time. There was an auto-related business, I think they installed audio equipment. And then, most recently, the neighborhood meeting for this proposal, which at the same time, I believe they've re-tenanted the building with a, it's a company that specializes in glass etching. So it's been some fits and starts. The neighborhood's been really patient through a series of neighborhood meetings, and those have been fairly productive meetings. It's also an area, not this parcel specifically, that came up a little bit during the Let's Talk program for Paramount Park, just in terms of wanting to see a little more investment in the general vicinity of like Lee to Nelson-ish. So it's a good question, because there have been a lot of conversations around that corner over the last decade or so.
Thank you. Counselor Weaver?
Thanks, I realized I should ask this question at this point rather than when we get into discussion. I do think this lends itself to the city dealing with the parcel next to it that is publicly owned, which is a drainage for Lena Gulch, and right now, it's just an empty piece of land. But when it floods, it's a, it's a small pond that we have in Wheat Ridge. And I was just curious if something, you know, in the rezoning, and it is built out to any of those uses, it feels like that needs to be dealt with in some way, just either because the rest of Lena Gulch is canyonized and it opens up at that point, and then gets, sorry, I don't know if canyonized is actually a term. It goes into a concrete, from a concrete conduit out, and it's pretty amazing. I keep expecting to see like a raft come through with a bunch of people when we have a lot of water coming through there. Not that I'm suggesting any of that. But has the city or Public Works or Planning thought about sort of if, if the residential density is to, to increase in that area, what, what we will do with that?
I can take a first step at that. You're right, Lena Gulch is channelized in that area. So any development of any type has to detain their storm runoff. So at a minimum, no matter what goes here, a new commercial development or new townhomes, it cannot make the surrounding stormwater runoff worse. What we decide to do at Lena Gulch, I'm probably less qualified to answer, don't know that that's a specific project, but we can certainly look into that. You're right that it is a city-owned parcel to the east.
Yeah, I think anytime we have opportunities like that, as we look towards development of additional stormwater detention facilities, that could, land could potentially become additional detention area, either in combination with some private development or standalone. So as we get further into our stormwater master plan, as we start to look at that, we'll be identifying areas of potential just like that particular property.
Okay, and they wouldn't, but the development wouldn't necessarily be allowed to use that as their stormwater detention?
No, no, unless there was some mutual benefit to the city that, by increasing that area somehow, but we have not explored that.
Okay, I just want to, want us to keep it on the radar since it's between Thirty-Eighth and Lena Gulch coming out there. Thank you.
Counselor Larson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one question about the previous use of the adjacent property. It was a gas station at some point, and how long ago did that go away?
The subject property was a gas station. I want to say it was about ten years ago.
And since its closure and the tanks were removed, has there been any testing of the soil?
Yes, they, I believe they went through this, this Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment for that removal and any necessary testing or remediation.
So no additional remediation would be required?
So that is not the city's jurisdiction, but they have gone through all of the proper channels of the state. It's our understanding that there's not any need for further action.
Great, thank you.
Are there any additional questions of the applicant or staff before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion? Going to close the public hearing, and Counselor Weaver, may I have a motion on this item?
You may. I approve, I move to approve council bill number one dash twenty twenty-four, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at one zero, three, nine, zero, West Thirty-Eighth Avenue from Commercial One, or C one, to Mixed Use Neighborhood, or M U N. On second reading, order it published and that it take effect fifteen days after final publication. Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Hoppe. Is there discussion on the motion? Mayor Protim Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I know, I appreciate the members of the neighborhood who came and spoke tonight and who spoke on WheatRidgeSpeaks.org. I think the, as I've walked through that neighborhood and spoken to people for years now, in Cambridge Park, different things like that, this, this property is a bit of a sore thumb for everybody around there, because it's been so many different things over the years. So I think, looking at the zoning map and look at the commercial that's there, but then you look at the R two that goes across, that goes up the street there, and then across the way is there's a PRD, so there's a little bit more density in there. I think that this zoning change makes sense for this neighborhood, and I hope that the neighbors will kind of understand that as they look forward and make sure they can stay involved and speak to Counselor Weaver and I, and we'll make sure that we stay involved and work for you. So just reach out, but I think this will be a good, hopefully, final destination for this, this property. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Weaver?
I too am in support of this for the same reasons. I've, I live on a house that directly faces Thirty-Eighth Avenue and have to have a side driveway because it's just not a reasonable thing to, it's harder and harder to have a house that faces Thirty-Eighth for lots of reasons, and that sort of speaks to the nature of, of, I really appreciate the person who came and spoke and the want of wanting to keep it single-family homes. However, that, that frontage on Thirty-Eighth makes it very, very difficult to turn that around as a single-family plot. And, and we have had this long history of, and I too have spoke with many of the neighbors, as Corey and I are both in District Three, and there have been problems even more recently with the inactivity at the, at the property, people dumping garbage, just things that unfortunately are also quickly degrading the neighborhood in the face on Thirty-Eighth Avenue. So I am also anxious to, to have a new, a new life for this property that will be more in keeping with, with the neighborhood. Thank you, thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Ohm?
Thank you, Mayor. I think this will be a great site for the project, and thank you for everybody that has voiced their opinion and staff that's worked on it. When I look at, I drive by this site to and from work every day, and I would say probably in the past year, it's, you know, it's chain-linked off, there's no activity, I don't think it's generating very much sales tax, but it's, you know, the pluses are its location. You're within walking distance, you know, I have a grocery store, coffee shop, the rec center. It's a really nice location for people living there to walk to, and it fronts, it fronts Thirty-Eighth, and so it's really close to the, you know, a minor arterial and a major arterial of Kipling. I think this will be a really good fit for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you everyone for your work on this tonight and for people coming out and speaking. I too am in support of this, you know, the, the mixed-use neighborhood, as it says here, the Zone District is generally located along neighborhood main streets and at neighborhood commercial centers and was established to encourage medium-density mixed-use development, and that's pretty consistent with what's along the corridor up to that point, and then transitions a little bit as it goes further west, although there is one more commercial space. So I think this is exactly the kind of site that mixed use was created for in our city. And, and I'm very excited about the revitalization of that stretch of Thirty-Eighth, and I think a project like this could really contribute to it. I wanted to just share, there's, in my neighborhood, there's the townhomes of West Ridge, I think they're, I can't remember the name of them, but they're the townhomes that were built along over by the Wilmore Davis Park, and I'd say about two-thirds of those are single-garage townhomes, and I walk my dog through there at least once a day, sometimes twice a day, and there really isn't an issue with parking spillover. There is a little additional parking in the project for guests, but I really haven't seen that, that parking demand. So, you know, each, each project's a little unique, but increasingly, we're seeing, you know, townhomes are, are, if it's a couple, it's one car, or sometimes it's just a single person who's living there. So if the, I think it's like almost a hundred units at that, at that particular townhouse development, and there's just really not a lot of spillover into the neighborhood. So hopefully, that is good tidings for District Three as well.
Thank you. Any additional discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously, including Councilmember Dozeman's vote.
Thank you very much. We will go to agenda item number three. Counselor Larson, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance for second reading. Council Bill number oh-two dash two-oh-two-four, an ordinance vacating any interest held by the city in a portion of West Forty-sixth Avenue between Everett and Estes Streets. At issue, the City of Wheat Ridge holds right-of-way in trust for the public. A portion of the right-of-way along the south side of Forty-sixth Avenue, located between Everett and Estes Street, has been deemed be unnecessary by the Community Development Department.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing, and, Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
Yes, our Community Development Director, Lauren McAlack, will take this one.
Director McAlack?
Thank you. Just briefly for the record, I think we've been to you a couple of times with some right-of-way cleanup lately. Comes up when property is sold or surveyed, in this case, the owners were getting a survey, and they had the very good observation that originally Forty-sixth Avenue was platted as a cul-de-sac. That happened in nineteen fifty-five, that's before the city existed, so we don't have perfect records as to why, but we can presume that in this case, it was dedicated just in case the subdivision to the west did not plat or build Forty-sixth. We know now that it goes through, it does connect from Garrison to Carr, and so the cul-de-sac was never needed, never constructed. It actually, if you went out there, you would never know it was there. It's the front yard of the duplex that got built subsequent to that plat. So when the owners brought it to our attention, we affirmed that it's not needed as right-of-way, and so we are recommending that we vacate the two tracks, A and B, that comprise that old right-of-way. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I have no one signed up to speak on this item, so I will go to any questions from council. Before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion, there are no questions. I'm going to close the public hearing, and Counselor Larson, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve council bill zero-two dash two-oh-two-four, an ordinance vacating any interest held by the city in a portion of West Forty-sixth Avenue on second reading. Order it published and that it take effect immediately.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Ohm. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously, including an I vote from Councilmember Dozeman.
Thank you.
Dozeman.
Thank you very much. We will go now to Agenda Item Number 4. Counselor Hulteen, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, it would be my pleasure. I'd like to introduce Council Bill number 3-2024, an ordinance amending Articles 5 and 11 of Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning bicycle parking and storage requirements and making conforming amendments therewith. At issue, the proposed ordinance creates long-term bicycle storage requirements for large multi-unit residential developments, updates and clarifies vehicle parking reduction allowances when additional bicycle parking is required, and decouples the bicycle parking requirements from vehicle parking requirements.
Thank you very much. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. May I have a motion on this item?
Yes, I move to approve Council Bill number 3-2024, an ordinance amending Articles 5 and 11 of Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning bicycle parking and storage requirements and making conforming amendments therewith. On first reading, order it published, the public hearing set for Monday, February 26, 2024, at 6:30 PM as a virtual meeting and in city council chambers, and that it take effect on March 1st, 2024.
We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has also passed unanimously, including Counselor Member Dozeman's I-vote.
Good, very good.
Mr. Mayor, for the, for the minutes, who seconded that motion?
Counselor Ohm did, I believe, or... You got it?
Okay.
Yeah, I can look here and see. Stites got that. Okay, Agenda Item Number 5. Counselor Ohm, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Council Bill number 04-2024, an ordinance amending Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning electric vehicle charging and parking requirements and making conforming amendments therewith. At issue, the proposed ordinance creates regulations for electric vehicle parking and charging facilities within the zoning code, defines, defines terms related to EVs, allows for EV charging facilities of various types throughout the city, and establishes a minimum EV parking space requirement.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. May I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill number 04-2024, an ordinance amending Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning electric vehicle charging and parking requirements and making conforming amendments therewith. On first reading, order it published, the public hearing set for Monday, February 26, 2024, at 6:30 PM as a virtual meeting and in city council chambers, and that it takes effect on March 1st, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Hulteen. Would the clerk please poll the council?
I think our electronics are, there we go. As before, Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously with Counselor Member Dozeman's vote, or motion.
Okay, thank you very much. We will now move to Agenda Item Number 6. Counselor Snell, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would be glad to. This is Resolution Number 06-2024, a resolution in support of democracy. This resolution declares the council's unwavering commitment to supporting democracy. The resolution affirms, emphasizes, and actively promotes democratic values and principles within the city of Wheat Ridge, encouraging widespread participation in fostering an inclusive and accountable governing structure.
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council. It is not quasi-judicial, and Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
No staff report. This item was, there was consensus from council to bring this resolution forward.
Okay, so the resolution is in your, in your packet. I have one member of the public who would like to speak on this. I'd like to invite Peggy Naomi Wantwa. Wantwadi, you know? Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Peggy Naomi Wantwadi, and I work in Wheat Ridge. I'm actually heartened and encouraged to see a resolution in support of democracy, and I wanted to share a little bit of perspective, having grew up in a non-democratic environment. I grew up under an autocratic style of government and emigrated to the United States in 1997. I'm first generation who was not born under, in my, in my family, who wasn't born under colonial rule, and when I say colonial rule, I mean that my country was owned by a king and then owned by that king's government after that for many years. When I first came to the U.S., I was fascinated by the Bill of Rights. I just could not fathom a document like that, and I went to high school in a small town in the Midwest, and I was most fascinated with the First Amendment. And so when I came to this, this country, I, I understood that I could speak my mind, I could offer my thoughts and opinions, disagreements, support or opposition for a cause, a party within the bounds of the law, without fear of persecution, arrest by government officials or other parties that were connected to, to, to government. I understood that I could go to public school without fear that my teachers would be missing, without fear that I would miss an entire year because my teachers weren't getting paid, and they wouldn't be paid for months, which by the way is not illegal where I come from, not to be paid for working, or that I would miss school because there was so much civil unrest. And I understood that coming to the United States and living under the American style of democracy, that I would not have the police or the military storm into my house like it did in 1991, I was nine years old, and demanding money because they weren't getting paid. And that night, by the way, we hid at our neighbor's house. I understood coming to this country that there would be peaceful transfer of power. I understood that local government official wouldn't be, and this has happened, hiding voting machines in their houses and print out votes in favor of themselves and those from their party. Our democracy, well, let me just say this, autocracy is, is not reserved just for the people on the other side of the world. It's not only for people fighting wars right now, it's not only for people with darker skin tones or those who speak languages other than English. Our democracy is fragile. It's not perfect, I know that, I'm a black woman in this country, but I also know that after having been a citizen for over 20 years now, that I love these United States of America, and that starting in this city, that we need to move forward with inclusion, transparency, a commitment to accountability as we move fo, we need to move forward with that and not backwards in order to keep our democracy alive. And so again, I am encouraged by this resolution, and I hope to encourage us to ensure that we all do our parts, starting in Wheat Ridge, so, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming today. Are there any, any questions of staff? We haven't got a staff report, so maybe we'll just go to a motion. Counselor Snell, may I have a motion on this item?
Yes, I move to approve Resolution Number 06-2024, a resolution in support of democracy.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Hulteen. Now, do we have discussion on the motion? Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you. I mean, I want to thank our speaker that was really moving, I think a couple of us up here a little, little, little teary-eyed. I'd actually like to read the resolution if I can. I, I asked for us to do this because it is a big year and democracy is, is closest in our own backyards, and being on city council is the closest thing to true democracy that we have, and so I think especially here in this room, democracy is particularly sacred. So, a resolution to support, in support of democracy. Whereas a democratic culture and form of government is an essential part of our society, providing citizens with the inalienable right to participate in the decision-making process that shapes our community, and whereas democracy is a commitment towards the fundamental dignity and worth of all people, a belief in the rule of law and the accountability that comes from representative government and the free exchange of ideas, and whereas the city council recognizes the historical struggle for democracy worldwide and honors those who have fought for the right to organize a government of the people, by the people, for the people, and whereas the city council asserts that it is the responsibility of local government and every individual to protect and strengthen the institutions of democracy and set aside small differences in service of a greater purpose, and whereas the city council affirms its commitment to upholding the principles of democracy, ensuring that the will of the people is heard and respected, and whereas the city of Wheat Ridge actively demonstrates its dedication to public participation in governance through the invaluable contributions and numerous volunteers on cities, city boards, commissions, authorities, committees, and whereas the city of Wheat Ridge acknowledges that inequality, discrimination, and hate pose significant threats to the justice of democracy, prompting the establishment of the Idea Committee to foster a more equitable and inclusive community. Now, therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the city, the city council of the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, that the city reiterates its unwavering commitment to the principles of democracy and preservation of citizens' rights to participate in the decision-making process that impacts their lives, and the mayor and city council are dedicated to fostering an inclusive and participatory democracy, welcoming input and engagement from all residents regardless of their background, religion, race, gender, sexuality, or socioeconomic status.
Thank you. Additional discussion on the motion? Counselor Weaver.
I just also wanted to thank the speaker that came in tonight. Thanks for sharing your experience.
Additional discussion? Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is one of the strongest and most clearly-written document I've read in a long time. My compliments. I would also like to emphasize the sixth whereas, the city of Wheat Ridge actively demonstrates its dedication to public participation in governance through the invaluable contributions of numerous volunteers on boards, commissions, authorities, and committees. I think that is, to me, one of the most important things that the, the city can encourage is participation in, in the process, and one of the best ways that any citizen can participate is by raising their hand and agreeing to volunteer to serve on one of our, our city boards. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional discussion on the motion? I have a couple of things I wanted to say. I wanted to thank you very much for coming tonight, really appreciate your story and for you sharing that with us. When I was in high school, I had the opportunity to live abroad in a, in a monarchy, not a constitutional monarchy, just a regular old monarchy, and, and about 10 years after that monarchy fell apart, there was a theocracy that, that took its place, and neither one of those forms of government do those citizens enjoy the rights and liberties and the opportunity to shape their own destiny that we do here. And, and the, the real, the real task in our democracy is that it takes everyone to participate in it and to work together to shape a brighter future for ourselves and our children and grandchildren. So I want to thank, thank this proclamation for coming forward. I hope that all the council will vote in favor thereof. So if there's no more discussion, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passed unanimously as before, including Counselor Member Dozeman's I-vote.
Thank you. I sort of hoped, hoped and thought it might. All right, we will move now to Agenda Item Number 7. Mayor Protim Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion approving the revised council rules of order and procedure dated February 13, 2023. At issue, the charter of the city of Wheat Ridge provides that the council may determine its own rules of procedure for meetings. Section B of suspension and amendment of these rules states, "These rules may be amended or new rules adopted by a majority vote of city council members present at a regular or special meeting, provided that the proposed amendments or new rules shall have been submitted in writing to city council at a proceeding meeting or study session. Any city council member or mayor may initiate an amendment of these rules in the manner provided for initiation of agenda items by Rule VD. These rules shall be reviewed and revised by the city council as needed and provided for hearing."
Thank you. This will be just a motion of the council. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
Yes, just quickly, as the Mayor Protim said, these rules were reviewed by city council on January 22nd, and I'll go through, there's not many, not too many, so I'll go through them real quickly, and I believe Mr. Dahl and I caught all the proposed amendments, but the first one was to delete the ability of speakers to donate their time to another speaker. We added language to the rules to allow the chair of the meeting the ability to limit the amount of time for public's right to speak. We clarified what public comments can be censored, clarifying that public comments should be of spoken word, clarifying that speakers are required rather than requested to sign the appropriate roster for public comment. We changed the date for the election of the Mayor Protim from November to January, changed the council parliamentarian from the Mayor Protim to the mayor, deleted some language to reference that also, that the mayor's, the mayor, the parliamentarian at the Mayor Protim, clarifying that Bob's Rules of Order will, shall advise the parliamentarian regarding questions of order rather than Robert's Rules of Order, and clarifying that the Mayor Protim can schedule additional study sessions but not necessarily, as necessary, but not to take place at any time or any place that person decides. So that, I believe we caught everything, but Mr. Dahl, missed anything there? So that was what we heard from January 22nd, so if, if you approve these this evening, they will be, the rules will be amended as so.
Okay. Any, any questions or, or discussion before we get going? Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just needed some clarification on a couple of things. The first one is that section for A4 clarifies that Mayor Protim can schedule additional study sessions as necessary but not to take place at any other day in time. So I think you kind of clarified it when you spoke to the intention behind it, so it's just, it couldn't be just in the middle of the night, any day. Is that kind of the intention?
Yes, correct. We, the procedure we've been using over the years is the Mayor Protim will occasionally schedule a special study session after a regular council meeting, so I think the rule is important to have, but we're just striking for now the language, yeah, that says he could, he or she could schedule it at any time or any place, so the, the intent is that they're scheduled after a regular meeting. You know, we could add more language to be more specific, but sometimes the more specific you get, the, the more complicated the rules get, so.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that. And then the other question I had was in regards to the Section 3B1, so changes the date for the election of Mayor Protim from November to January, and there was a brief discussion, but if one of the colleagues that brought that forward could just give a little bit more explanation to remind me of why that was proposed?
Ms. Ms. Hulteen, I believe, was, brought that forward?
Yeah, I think, yeah, that was my proposal, and the reason I was proposing that is that when we have, you know, sometimes we have four new council members that come in in November, and the election of the Mayor Protim then is really, like, either sort of biased towards the seated councilors who have been here before, it kind of brings the Mayor Protim selection sort of alongside the election, and I just thought to allow new council members to actually like get their sea legs and participate in the selection of the Mayor Protim, really as like a fully-seated city council member, that not having it happen so quickly after being sworn in seems to be in the best interest of seated as well as like newly-seated city council members. So it was just to give a little time for new council members to get acquainted and understand what Mayor Protim is and does and have those conversations not concurrent with election season. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I would just like to say that I, I'm also in support of moving it to January for scheduling purposes too, because the Mayor Protim is responsible for the new councilor's orientation, and sometimes when we do have elections, people are reelected, so it's only maybe one or two different council members, and so it's not necessarily, so it, it's something where the training tend- And so it's not necessarily, so it, it's something where the training can, can tend to take longer, the orientation can tend to take longer, and that can kind of take up, you have to make sure you get that done before the other Mayor Pro Tem comes in. So I think that moving into January is a good idea, and thank you for bringing that up, Councilwoman Holtein.
Mr. Dahl, I had a few things here. And I want to thank you for your, we don't have a lot of definitions in this document, and I think that's great, but we use the word adjourned meetings. And to me, when I, when we close this meeting tonight, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. And I'm not sure, we, we use it about six places. What, I know what a regular meeting is and a special council meeting, but what is an adjourned meeting and why do we have that in our rules?
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that. It's kind of an archaic term, and in practice, it's not ever used anymore. I agree with you that in practice, the term adjourn means you've completed that meeting. And if you're going to have another meeting, it's a new one, not an adjourned meeting. The, the terminology derives from the phraseology, okay, this meeting is adjourned to another time. So you have a, especially for example, you have a session of the legislature and they've got a certain number of bills in front of them, they can adjourn their session from day to day because that really relates to a body that's much larger. It's a good example of a holdover, I think, from the Robert's Rules of Order, which contemplates, as you know, large bodies that are kind of convened for, you know, a legislative session and doesn't translate well to groups like the city council who does their work, they're done with their work for that meeting, they're done. I think I would be fine with eliminating that term. And the few times that council would need to do something like that would be to continue a meeting until another time. It used to be that council would go past 11 o'clock frequently, and there'd be a motion to, you know, either keep going or to stop. So we can certainly delete the term adjourned meetings throughout the, these rules and do no harm at all to your procedure.
If you would, if you would keep track of, we're going to just speak on a couple of three things, I think, I hope there's nothing more than that in the minute. We'd be able to incorporate that into a, an amendment to the motion or whatever, or do that. In, in section, let's see, under Roman numeral two, public's right to speak, A, public's right to speak, in subsection two there, we talk about sort of the time for speaking, and we have for agenda items, a member of the public may speak once is A, and for non-agenda items, a member of the public requiring translation may speak for six minutes. C, we talk agenda items for a member of the public. It seems like we would need an item number D, which would, which would mirror item number B for agenda items. So if you have an agenda item that requires translation, that we would allow six minutes for that item also.
Sure, so the idea is to replicate two A, two B as a new sub D.
Well, we would do, we would add sort of subsection D as in dog.
D as in dog, mirroring B.
Mirroring B as in boy.
Yes, yes.
But it would be for agenda items, so that was one that I had there.
Certainly.
And then over in the same section, A, in number four, in E, in Edward, we talk about written comments coming to the council. And just in, in about halfway through there, we talk about the reading of written comments into the record is not permitted unless a member of the public representing the author is present to read them into the record at the request of the author. It doesn't allow the author to come and read his or her comments into the record.
That's true. That's language that's been in the rules for many, many years, and I think was responsive to an era in which people would read comments of, you know, by, by others. Sometimes council members would read comments by others, and I think that was really designed to kind of restrict that practice, which hasn't been.
What, what I was, what I was going to suggest is after the word unless and before the, the letter A, unless the author or a member of the public, so that we allow the author to come and read their own comments.
Certainly, as, as is often true, people are, there are some people who are not at all comfortable speaking extemporaneously and need to bring their texts, and council has never objected to that, but could based upon the language.
Okay. Okay. And, um, I had a question on Roman numeral three. D as in dog, city attorney. And it seems that we're requiring that the city attorney or the acting city attorney shall attend all meetings of city, of the council unless excused. And my question on that was, does that include study sessions of the council, or is that intended to be just business meetings of the council?
As written, it says meetings, and that does distinguish it from study sessions, even though a study session is a meeting. We can certainly make it a little more clear. As you well know, I attend all the meetings, very rarely am I gone, but the study sessions I attend when there appears to be a need or particular interest. I think as, using the term meetings, I think gets you, gets you by, and, and still allows that practice to continue.
Whatever your recommendation is there is fine with me.
Yeah, I'm inclined to say no change needed.
Okay. We don't want to compel you to be here any more than you need to.
I enjoy being here. I, even on study sessions where I don't have a lot to say, it's valuable to me to know as much as possible about the city. I've found over the years that it, it makes my work more productive if I'm educated about what's going on, so.
Well, and I'll note that we don't charge, charge you to be here.
I appreciate that.
So we're, we're happy to have you. Anyway, those were all of my, my comments. Are there any other comments that, that council, councilors would like to make to the?
Just, Mr. Mayor, point of order, if you, if you will, there are your rules, so you can take a vote to amend your rules, but your rules state that any changes to the rules have to be presented at the preceding, the previous meeting. So these additional changes you're making this evening are not following your rules.
Unless.
Unless you want to amend your rules.
Under section Roman numeral seven, you can suspend the rules.
Let me make sure you're following the rules.
So you've got a couple of choices here procedurally. If these changes are minor enough and the council's in agreement, and in a minute we'll get to a motion, and the motion, I can recite the three changes the mayor indicated and can add those to the motion. And the maker of the motion can probably also add to their motion, I move to suspend the rules under section 7A and, and adopt what was presented and in addition, presented tonight, and in addition, the three changes as articulated, and that would get it all done tonight.
And that's one of the unusual features that you get when you have a democracy.
Uh huh, yes, indeed. Yep.
So if there's, if there's no more discussion on that, then I'm going to turn to our capable Mayor Pro Tem and ask for a motion on Agenda Item Number Seven. Can you help me with the additions to that?
And I, I can assist with that motion if you like.
Sorry, point of order. Do we have to make, we need to make the motion to suspend the rules first and then make the motion with the changes, correct?
I think you could probably wrap it all into one.
One motion.
Giant motion. I can, I think we can do that. And, and I can suggest some language if that'd be helpful.
I think that's what he's waiting for.
Okay, great. Yeah, I think a proper motion would be to move under rule Roman numeral 7A to suspend the rules of the council for the purpose of approving the, uh, let's see, hang on, for, suspend the rules of the council under section 7A and further to approve the revised council rules of order and procedure dated February 12th, 2024, as presented in the packet for the meeting of February 12th, with the following three additional changes, delete all references to adjourned meetings throughout the rules. Second, create a new subsection, Roman numeral two A, two D, to mirror that in two A, two B. And third, to edit section two A for E to add the words the author after the word unless. So moved?
Oh, so moved.
There you go. Perfect.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please bowl the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously as before, including Councilmember Dozeman's remote vote.
It was Hoppe the second?
Okay, thank you very much. That will conclude our agenda items. Let's get back to the master agenda, and we will go to city managers' matters. Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real quickly, we had a good meeting this, this morning with Intermountain Health Lutheran Hospital, and we're on there, it was, the title of the meeting was Six Month Countdown. So we don't have any public dates right now for anybody, but they are working on a six month countdown for when the hospital will open, so I'm very excited about that. They are preparing for the move, preparing for community events, comparing for ribbon, preparing for ribbon cutting. So I'm very excited for that project to come to fruition, and we'll get more information out hopefully in the next couple of weeks about that.
Thank you. City attorneys' matters, Mr. Dahl.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, we'll, we'll go to elected officials' matters. I'll start with our clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ballots for the March 5th Super Tuesday primary for presidential candidates will mail today. The actual deadline, of course, is 7:00 PM on March 5th. And it's, will, as usual, ballots will begin arriving in mailboxes in Wheat Ridge tomorrow if the Postal Service is able to get them sorted that fast.
One day delivery.
Yes. I also wanted to let you know that from time to time, the new senior deputy clerk, Argy Greer, will be sitting here during council meetings, keeping them in it. I will also do that from time to time. We don't have a particular schedule or rotation or anything, but she's only been doing this for 30 years, so I imagine she'll be able to get it right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. We will now go to elected officials' matters, and we'll start with our remote counselor. Thank you for joining us, Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry I'm not with you this evening, I have a sick kiddo and kind of a revolving season for that these days. I just wanted to thank the speaker that spoke in regards to democracy and that we brought that resolution forward. And I particularly found the part about how, the fragility of democracy and how we must fight for it to be very poignant, and Councilmember Holtein mentioned, you know, that, that it's now just as much as ever as important. And so I just really appreciate my colleagues for bringing that forward and, and supporting that. And miss y'all, thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Snell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Miss you too, Counselor Dozeman. A couple of quick things, I would like to recognize the Wheat Ridge Active Transportation Advisory Team. They had a very successful meeting last Thursday evening at Esther's, a state of the city meeting where the public came and several different topics were discussed around safe biking, walking through our city. But I'd especially like to recognize Directors Mikulak and DeAndrea for being there. It was incredible to watch. You're so accessible in that meeting, and so many people had good questions, and I heard so many good conversations. And I just, that just means so much to so many people for you to just be there and say, yeah, I see the problem and let's work together to fix it. And so thank you so much, that was a great meeting, and thank you for your accessibility for that, both of you. And then I also would like to recognize all of you, my, my colleagues in, in supporting the resolution on, of supportive democracy. I think that is, it's a, it's a wonderful thing for us to have, and so many things we take for granted that I think could be gone in an instant. And so it's just time, a good time for us to really like hash that out a little bit and, and recognize how lucky we are, and, and big thanks to the speaker, I know she's gone already, but that was a wonderful presentation also, so that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Holtein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, once again, I'd like to thank our speaker for coming tonight and sharing her experiences. I also want to thank the Ad-Apps, the Wheat Ridge Active Transportation Advisory Team. State of the City was really fun. We started that, I don't know, like eight, eight years ago, nine years ago, and it reminds me of what makes Wheat Ridge really special, in that you can have elected officials, senior staff, community members, and, you know, it's just like a celebration of the good work we've done, you know, the work ahead that we can continue to collaborate on. But it just felt like kind of the, the ultimate Wheat Ridge experience. And I think one of the things I particularly appreciated about it was when, as long as I've been doing bike advocacy, I really focus on what I like to call the eight to 80, which is when we think of if it works for eight-year-olds and it works for 80-year-olds, it works for everyone in between. And all too often in bike advocacy, I think people tend to think about that like super confident, uber athlete, you know, typically a guy on a really nice bike. And, and I think in this community, we're really thinking about the eight to 80. And in that room, we literally had some seven-year-olds, and then, and then we had some, we had a gal who was 79 years old. So we, we had the eight to 80 in the room, and it just reminded me of how we do things in Wheat Ridge. One of the requests that the Ad-Apps made of, of us, the accountability folks in the room, was to move forward with the Vision Zero resolution. And so I would like for us to move forward with, with developing a Vision Zero resolution, and I'd like us to do that in partnership with the Ad-Apps and our community members who are really affected every day about how they get around the city, walking and biking. So we'd love to move forward with that. And then, a little bit on the same note, so the snow removal, thank you to Ms. Blinn, who I think is now offline, but for calling in on her observations. You know, I did notice this morning that a lot of commercial properties had gotten out and shoveled sidewalks. You know, I think a big dumping snowstorm on a Friday and Saturday night, some of them just don't have people who come shovel on Sundays. But there, there are definitely a few that, that aren't. So I'm seeing some improvement, but it's definitely something to, to stay diligent about. However, our roads were just fabulously plowed. I just want to continue to recognize, like I notice the difference when I cross Wheat Ridge city lines and go into other communities. And then the last thing, I've been selected to participate in the National League of Cities Transportation and Infrastructure Committee. And so it is a collection of people like me from across the country who work with NLC staff and actually develop a policy platform, and NLC works closely with both our legislative leaders in Washington as well as other leaders across the country. And one of the topics that they've identified this year as being particularly important is train derailments. And like since, since that was announced a few weeks ago, there have been two train derailments in Colorado, and we have trains that go through our community too. So I'm really excited to be part of this committee looking at train safety and recognizing that we wouldn't ever want it, but Wheat Ridge, you know, we could be home to a train derailment. So ensuring the safety of the trains passing through our community and communities across the country is of utmost importance this year, and I will be reporting back, and I will be here, you know, voicing up about bikes and walking and transit with them as well. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I would like to recognize the remarkable life of a distinguished Wheat Ridge citizen and pay tribute to Jack Padota, my friend, neighbor, and respected community leader. I visited with Jack the other day, and he is resting and tired, but his spirits are good. Jack was diagnosed with a terminal cancer recently and is now resting easy in hospice with his family. Born in 1936 in what would become Wheat Ridge, Jack Padota built, built a successful greenhouse business on land that his parents farmed for most of the 20th century. Located on Garrison Street. of the 20th century. Located on Garrison Street between 46th Place and the I-70 Frontage Road, Padota Greenhouses Incorporated operated a 50,000-square-foot greenhouse business and adjacent truck farm that served the Denver area and beyond for more than three decades. Padota Greenhouse's business was widely recognized for the beautiful carnations and miniature carnations it produced, and helped Wheat Ridge earn the nickname Carnation City. Upon his retirement in 2000, Jack sold most, most of the, much of the greenhouse and farm acres for development into what would become the 64-residence Garrison Village condominium community where I live, have lived for the past eight years. In the meantime, Jack is always active around the neighborhood, and his cheerful holiday front yard displays turned the Padota home into a community landmark. Jack Padota is an Army veteran and longtime board member of the Clear Creek Valley Water and Sanitation District. Tonight, I offer a hearty Wheat Ridge salute to Jack Padota for his important contributions to the heritage and resilient fiber of our community and to the city of Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, I, I think tonight, there were several neat things about tonight, but I'm very excited about the zone change on 38th that went through. And I, I'm thinking about it in terms of what's going to be happening on 38th Avenue in the next few years, and just creating this cohesive corridor for, for active transportation as well as car transportation. And it's just coming together. I'm super excited. So thank you, councillors, and thank you, staff, for, for seeing that vision.
Thank you. Counselor Rome?
Thank you, Mayor. I definitely too want to thank Director DeAndrea and Director Mickulak for coming to the ADATs and, and to the ADATs for inviting me. You know, there's just, it was so supportive to come into a, a community that, you know, is always trying to look at some issues and, and the Wheat Ridge community and the ADAT community, and then support us and, and help us as city council, you know, to make things better for Wheat Ridge. It's a, it's a really good, really good community. Thank you, ADATs. The other thing I wanted to talk about was something kind of small. I know the code is always changing, and we're always trying, trying to do the right thing. And one of the things that is, that I became aware of recently is the, the mixed-use commercial zoning. And so right now, a mixed-use, in the mixed-use commercial, there are town homes, so mixed-use townhomes, that are currently exempt from the short-term rental whole-home limits, the cap that we have. So we all thought, you know, we got this, we have the cap, and it's actually excluded from that. And so what I'm looking for from council is, is support for, I guess it may be a study session, but to do an amendment to that, to include the mixed-use, in the mixed-use commercial, the mixed-use townhomes, include that as part of the cap.
I'll support that.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Okay, thank you. Counselor Hoppe?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank my colleagues for speaking about the democracy. And I, we had public commenters tonight for, for the hearing, and fantastic public speaker for our resolution on democracy. And that's one of the biggest parts of democracy is, is people coming and participating in that. So I, we have the statue out front that says you get the form of government that you, you show up for. So it's good to have people actually showing up and, and being a part of that. So thank you to everybody who showed up tonight and, and were paying attention. And we do read those public comments on Wheat Ridge Speaks as well. So to all the commenters who, who put commenters, or comments on that, we appreciate it. Couple weeks ago, many of us had the opportunity to go tour the Makerspace down on 44th and Field, which is fantastic. Local Works is going to do a fantastic job there. It's really exciting to kind of see that coming along and, and see the vision taking shape. So really excited about that. Last week, I had the opportunity to work with the Wheat Ridge Education Coalition, which was our last year's council partnership award winner. Great group of people who were from all the different elementary, middle, and high schools, PTA, family liaison members. Everett is going to do their International Night coming up in March, so I'll, I'll have some more information on that. Pretty exciting times over at Everett. It's, it, as somebody who was a former Everett student, it's cool to see the school coming back and people excited to go there now. It's really fun to see. And then I also want to thank the ADATs for an amazing job. State of the City the other night, that was a lot of fun too, to see such a positive group of people. But it's also cool when we as councillors and policymakers get to go in and, and kind of cheer for all the things that we've done, 2J, and some of the things that, that are happening and have happened and, and will continue to happen. So it was a lot of fun. And I also want to thank Esters. Esters not only played host to the Active Transportation Team the other night, but also to the Prospect Valley PTA team. So I was kind of, if you guys ever saw the movie Mrs. Doubtfire, I was running from one meeting to the other, trying to like pay attention in both. I wasn't changing clothes in between the middle. But just like Esters and all the other really cool businesses in Wheat Ridge, Valentine's Day is coming up. Hey, fellas, Valentine's Day is coming up Wednesday, just in case you weren't paying attention. But make sure you find anything you're going to buy your, your significant other in Wheat Ridge. You can take them out to a beautiful dinner, whatever you need to do. So thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I, I was privileged to join the ATAT team the other night. And gee, it's really impressive to go into a room and, and see so many activated citizens, and what a great, what a great thing. And, you know, we've, we've been doing great work in, in creating bicycle infrastructure and sidewalk and walking infrastructure in our city. And I think we're really on a, on a roll. And I, I go to a lot of meetings with other mayors from around the metro area. And I'll tell you, we've got a lot of things going right in Wheat Ridge. And I want to thank, you know, we have a great city council, we've got a great staff, but more importantly, we've got a great group of citizens who are out there making this work together. So I want to thank you all very much. It was great to meet with the Intermountain Health folks and, and talk about their, their new hospital that's opening up, and the opportunities that we have on the Lutheran Legacy Campus. And I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of things still left to do in our city. So I want to encourage us all to keep our eye on the ball and keep moving forward. So if there's no more business to come before council, we will stand adjourned.